All right, I want to call Government Operations to order please. First up, we have Mr. Wallen for the I Love New York Revocable Permit.
Who's that?
His son's first birthday is today, so we want to get him in and out.
So, what you have in front of you is a application for a revocable permit for I Love New York Pizza. What they would like to do is replace their deck that they currently have. The deck has been there for quite some time. It's in a condition of disrepair. They'd like to repair the deck. Three feet of that deck, the deck goes to the back of the sidewalk. However, the property line is, in most cases, it's not the back of the sidewalk. So, three feet of the deck is in the right of way. Coes will be inspecting the deck. The city has no objection to this being in the right of way as long as they are granted this permit.
Questions, comments?
How much is the narrow of the sidewalk?
This is not going to change the sidewalk at all. The sidewalk right now is, I believe, there's a two-foot utility strip, and then there's a five-foot sidewalk, and then they have stairs that are internal. They're not external, so there's stairs that are internal of the deck. And it's a flush deck. They're not going to be coming out at all any farther. I believe this deck is original from Ben &amp; Jerry's, so, you know, it's been there for quite some time. And we're going to be able to maintain at least five feet of clear space on those pedestrians.
Other questions or comments?
I'll move them out to you.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Happy to thank you very much.
Well, I have pictures of Facebook with your party hat on.
There you go.
Okay, Uniform Rental and Laundry Service bid, Mr. Howard.
So, this is for the Uniform Rental that we'd like to enter an agreement with Universe Corporation, which just went out last year for bid. We have two respondents to the bid. One did not meet the qualifications, and the other came through with everything that we needed to go with. So, we'd like to enter into that contract for one year, and then next year, we would reach out even further and try to get more bidders to come aboard.
Questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the bid, it talks about uniforms and lab coats and all this. So, everyone of these department people are wearing some type of uniform?
Everyone has a certain either uniform or laundry service that is provided for by Universe, whether it be uniforms, whether it be towels, mop heads, things like that. So, we're all affected, you know, between facilities, fire, sewer street, wastewater treatment plant, water department, and between the pump station and the main. So, yes, everybody has a little piece into it.
So, it's not all uniform, it's all the other things that you just noted?
Correct.
Okay.
Uniform rental. Other questions?
Thank you. How does this bid price compare to last year, Jeremy? Where are they?
Last year, they are right on the same numbers as what we had last year. They've held us to the same numbers as where we were. So, there was really no...
No increase.
No increase at all for that. So, they've been a very reliable vendor for us. None of our departments have had an issue with them and the products that they supply to us. So, that's why we really feel that Universe is one of the better quality people that we've built.
That is $25,500?
Yes. And that's a culmination of...
All the departments.
Let's sit here.
Yep. Okay.
Other questions or comments?
I'd like to move this.
All in favor? Any other business that comes before Government Operations?
The chairman?
Okay, so, the second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
I'm going to call order City Development and Planning. First item on the agenda concerns the land bank, and Mr. Hoffman is here to talk to us about that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you have on your request form, it's exciting time for land banks and revitalization in Schenectady, but it's time to get down to the busy griddings. We have to put our application into the Attorney General for the funding that we're requesting, a million dollars and maybe more, for the land bank, for Amsterdam, the county, and the city. And in order to put that application in the way we have it planned right now, we're going to be asking for approximately 31 properties in the Eastern Avenue neighborhood and maybe some others. But we need a resolution and support and a commitment to transfer these properties so that when we put the application in, we're going to be, we need a resolution from the city and from the county and from Amsterdam to go along with the application. So, that's the basics of it. I'll try to answer any questions you have about it. I'll raise here to answer any questions that Metroplex is assisting us in this, and as is the city and the legislature.
We're talking about the 31 properties in Eastern Avenue corridor?
Right, not on Eastern Avenue. Not just on the street, but in the, up in the neighborhoods, up in the back there. The city owns some vacant lots and some other properties. You know, we want to do as thorough a job in that neighborhood as we can.
And the occasion is to demolish and rehab also?
Yes, we hope to demolish and rehab, and some of them are vacant now. We hope to clean them up and maybe do, you know, property next door, maybe do a community garden. We also have a facade program going in Eastern Avenue neighborhood right now where homeowners can apply to the land bank for up to $5,000 in assistance to help with the outside facade.
And this trillion dollars is coming towards Schenectady, all the three million?
The land bank is with Amsterdam, the county, and the city. Okay, so, part of the three million, they pretty much said they're going to, you know, three million's available at each land bank. We may ask for a little more because Amsterdam has some things going. And, you know, the county has a couple of things that we may want to ask for too. But we said we hope to get the three million for the land bank. It will all go to the city. We're hoping the lion's share, you know, two, two and a half, two and a quarter, if you have a time. Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Porterfield?
I just wanted to know what the share would be, so we can answer that question.
We're going to ask for a little more, you know, with specific projects in mind. You know, and we're calculating all that and getting the application ready.
And Ms. Louie Bearman asked this question, but I couldn't hear. So, all the properties that you're targeting, the 31 properties, all belong to the city currently? They're all currently...
Some are owned by Sura. Some are owned by the city. Right, so, yeah. And I believe some of them are in the most recent round of foreclosures. I'm not quite sure how final that is, but several of them are in that recent round.
Mr. Kozier?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments here and a question. Again, wonderful partnership with the land bank, with Metroplex, Sura, and IDA for working in our neighborhoods. We've been talking about Metroplex not getting into the neighbors for a long, long time. We know they've been doing a great work with downtown. And again, my theory is the city is Schenectady, the heart is the downtown. And without the arteries, we're now going to move into the arteries and start working into the neighborhoods. Eastern Avenue is certainly an area of need. And again, there's many of those buildings that you have said are vacant and just completely need to be taken down. The other question is, how often does this application come forward from the state? Is this something that's a yearly basis or with land banking funding?
They've announced it. Last year, they announced the first. Gave hints about another one, so then they announced another one this year. And they've also indicated that there will more than likely be a third round next year.
And the reason I ask that is, I'm sure we're all aware with the County City School District, reorganizing, redistricting the buildings. 2016, Elmer Avenue School is slated to be closed. I'd really like to see if Metroplex and the land bank could continue to work on that Eastern Avenue corridor and with the school district perhaps, maybe turn that vacant building into some housing for seniors or for veterans, as we're talking about some of the other neighborhoods. And I think it'd just be a wonderful way to partner with the school rather than to wait it, for a building to burn down like we did on Brevin for so many years. So, again, if we can keep that in the back of our minds, you know, a long-range plan to work with, partner with the school district on the next one maybe, and then take a look at that Elmer Avenue school, utilize it for some potential housing.
The land banks have generated a lot of credibility around the state, and not only the Attorney General, but some of the other funding sources, you know, we hope will be coming forward. As the Attorney General settles with the large foreclosing banks, settles their lawsuits with them, that's the funding. And they want to make sure that it's used for revitalization in areas where those foreclosures took place. So, they don't want to get, don't want to let us get too far off the dime there. But they had indicated that there will be continual funding for land banks at least into 2015.
There you go. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Gillan, did you want to add anything?
Just an interesting point that David Ogiehan from our staff has been really blazing a trail on Eastern. We were thrilled to have Courtney Campbell Schneider in Schenectady with the mayor, mayor of Amsterdam, and many of you were there who really appreciate. And we put to good use of the $150,000 that he provided us last year, leveraged it with Metroplex dollars and IDA dollars to see real progress take place on Eastern. And this is a great opportunity, as Liz Taylor often said, to apply for $3 million. This state funding that is available, $20 million statewide, is all money that, the mayor made this point very well at the event, is all money that he won in legal actions against these large foreclosing banks. So, it is not taxpayer money. It is money that he won for his efforts in legal actions on foreclosure cases. So, it's, in effect, found money for the state. And we're working very closely with Steve, the land bank, and the mayor, Mr. Steve, to try to bring home this next, this next mandate, if you will, or this next allocation of dollars. And we really appreciate your support. We need to send forward a strong resolution from the city and from the county legislature to say that we want this money, like aggressively to be for, really put its good use here in Schenectady. We have had some preliminary discussions with the school district on that school. Great idea. It could be a conversion to housing, and it fits right into the whole Eastern Avenue corridor. So, we've had very preliminary discussions at this point, but it is something that we have on the radar. As more things get done on Eastern, a lot more developers and more people interested in investing there, so that we can play a role in this school.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to...
Happy to move it. I think we've been working toward this part of the land bank. We've really set a solid foundation to work off of, and it's exciting to see it's starting to really fall into motion. But at a critical time of being well organized to move forward, not just willy-nilly. So, I'm thrilled to...
Second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Robles. Thank you.
All right. Second item on the agenda was ceremonial resolution for parecas. They just had their $100,000...
Two seasons ago on the end of my name, I'm happy to move that.
Okay. Second by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor?
Is there a party coming up there?
Aye. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else to come before City Development and Planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Call to order public safety. Dog holding facility. Assistant chief, Pauzo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody knows where we came from and the challenges that we've had in the past with the exorbitant amount of dogs that we take into custody every year. And with that, we built the facility. The facility is in nice shape. It's brand new. It's kept clean and neat, and the temperature is fine and adequate for the dogs. We try to adopt many dogs or transfer the ownership to them. We evaluate all the dogs prior to transfer and hopefully, in hopes of having the transfer adopted as opposed to euthanizing them. The, well, do you have any questions? I mean, I'm not quite sure with some of the issues.
We know that the city works on a tight budget, right? And we know that all the city workers are super busy. So, I think what came out to me strongest was, how can we leverage people who have this as their passion, not necessarily their job, right? Because we certainly saw that there's support, there's people that want to come into the facility, that want to help take care of the dogs, we walk them, they're certainly already donating food and toys. So, how can we safely leverage that? Because to me, it's just like we encourage our neighborhood associations to get out into the parks and pick up, you know, litter and, you know, help maintain a healthier city atmosphere overall. How can we use that and leverage that volunteerism?
We do work with a lot of other agencies and have and still do as far as some guidance. Because let's face it, we, this is relatively new to us. And so, we've been searching out guidance. We've been attending training sessions to educate ourselves and learn on the best means and best ways to handle situations like this. I think some of the questions that you have regarding some other volunteers coming in, to me, I see that as some legal issues that probably would sit better with corporation counsel. But certainly, we're not opposed to that. And again, we have been working with other organizations or associations to help us with living dogs.
Is this anything that we go and study this far?
There's something, there are things we can do, we can study. Mostly just people tell us what groups want them to do. We can evaluate what things are possible, what things aren't. We need to work this, this, this.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Chief, what is the policy right now when a dog is brought in as far as wonderly fed? How many times will they be fed a day? They're fed, they're fed, they're watered every day. There's water. They're fed, we kind of changed that a little bit because we were feeding them twice a day. And what happens there, of course, is you feed them twice a day, then they excrete twice a day. So, we've scaled that back to feeding them once a day. But they're also given treats throughout the day as well. Treats to eat. Who's John is that? The animal control officers we have, we have two full-time and one part-time. We just lost one, and I just received four applications. And hopefully, this week, I'll be conducting interviews to hire, I'd like to hire a couple more. And fortunately, it looks like I have some good applicants. So, I'm going to hire hopefully two, maybe more, I don't know. But I have a budget, obviously, to work with, and I'm not worried about that budget for spending it. I think we can live within it without a problem.
Within your budget, would it be possible to hire someone for detail? Because from what I understand, I don't think 24 hours is acceptable by some guidelines. Maybe it might be acting markets, I can't tell you off the top of my head. I thought it's supposed to be 12 hours?
Well...
Especially for water.
It's recommended that they always have water. And we have, we check on them. They're, five days a week, they're checked on. There's somebody working two shifts. And then on Sundays, we have a part-timer come in. We had one coming in on Saturdays, of course, she resigned about three weeks ago. And, yeah, some days, like Sundays into Mondays, it could be a stretch, a period of time where there's not, there's no one there. But we make sure, we check on them, and we make sure they have water.
So, this is a manpower issue at times, as soon as...
It is, and hopefully soon that will be resolved.
In what way?
By hiring, hiring more part-timers.
Do we have money in the budget to do that, or is that what we have to look at?
Absolutely. We do.
Because it seems to me like the biggest complaint too was interaction. I know this is a short-term facility, I understand that, but sometimes it's turning into a long-term facility for some of these dogs that that dog...
But that's rare.
Yeah, I understand. But they don't have any real human interaction as far as somebody to take them out. Wes, as Prazo brought it up, you know, if we have people that are willing to do this...
The dogs, the dogs are the ones that are manageable. They're exercised, they're taken out of their wank.
By the animal control?
The dangerous dogs are a different story. That is wrong.
But this is by the animal control officers?
Yes.
Walking them?
Yes. However, we had a meeting recently with the mayor and one of our main societies that is willing to help us out some more. They already do work with us on a daily basis, and they want to help us more. And we're going to be looking at possible an outside run for the dogs that we can let them run outside, the fenced-in caged in area. So, we're researching that now.
Just one other question for, is this, and I know it's come up other times with other things when we ask for volunteers, is this going to be a unit work problem if volunteers come out?
Again, that's, to me, that's a legal question.
It would depend on what it's exactly volunteers are going to do.
Can you be a little more specific as far as if they need to walk the dogs? Is that a problem?
I'm not comfortable right now giving the specifics of the different situations. I want to sit down, go to the contract, and hear what exactly people are hoping to have them do, and then give a case-by-case answer.
Ms. Prazo?
How can we set it up so that the animal control officer's position defaults to another position with the city? Because, I mean, how are we protecting to make sure that one of our full-time animal control officers steps out in the street and thinks run over by a llama, scat her head, right? How are we protecting that that defaults somewhere else? Can that be, we have a fail-safe method, right? In other words, if somebody needs a vaccination, if we lose a part-time person or whatever, can that, can we have a backup person that's always available or a backup position that always defaults to ensure that that's constant?
Exactly. And that's one of the challenges right now, especially losing one of the part-timers. So, but we've been managing, we've been, you know, taking care of it. But more, more, that's why I requested permission to hire possibly a couple extra part-timers.
But instead of hiring additional staff that would tax the budget, can we have a default person? So, you know, whatever, you know, I don't know who, but...
And that's something else I looked into today. I spoke to Carl Wilson regarding getting some help, and he was, whatever I can do for you, let me know. So, again, we're checking all options here, all options.
I just feel like it's up to us to work as hard as we can possibly work to make sure this happens as fast as we can possibly happen. And that we're better, you know? Not to say it was bad, but we're better.
Absolutely.
Because we can always be better, you know?
I agree.
And especially for this vulnerable population, you know, even if it is a temporary situation.
Sure.
And again, I would love to see, we have passionate people who love animals. I would love to see them be able to have the ability to assist the city because we have some, I mean, wonderful programs in our city that people give eagerly of their time and effort. And I don't see why we can't incorporate that in this part of the city too.
Can we look at the automated feeder system?
The automated feeder system? Sure. Absolutely. Yeah.
What was the question?
Automated feeder system.
Or some water?
Can you put it in the back to us?
Yeah.
Is there any way within the budget, or if we have to look at it because we're coming up to a budget, to have the facility with a person there at least on a regular basis? So, we don't have to worry about if somebody's on vacation? At least on a five-day basis, then somebody can fill in on the weekends? I think ultimately, that would be the best thing if the fish were over or somebody's looking for a dog, they know where to come if they lost their pet? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, if there's enough money there, that's always a question. You know, do we have, you know, could we hire a professional, somebody that is familiar with this type of facility and manage it? That would be, that would be ideal.
Another thing that really jumped out at me that I thought was a very strong point that we can easily rectify is the amount of information on our website. And is that, I'm sorry that I don't know, is it the county function or a city function? That it looked like it was, it went to the county, but I could be wrong. Where it says, you know, who they call, if we could have pictures. And again, if we have, I think one of the volunteer services available to us is somebody who is willing to do web work. Somebody can snap a picture and say, found in this spot on this day, you know, that, you know, any kind of information or even who to call because, I mean, that's, I think, an important resource. And then if we can even link out to local shelters and things of that nature where the shelter can say, okay, click here to visit the city's temporary holding and find your dog. I mean, you know, we're in the world of information technology now, and that's the way everyone navigates. And it just seems like that's an easy lift for us.
We met with, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
My conversation with Steve Caparizzo, we're looking to implement that type of program right after Labor Day to be able to get photographs of dogs as they come in, be able to post them. And again, the real goal is that we don't have any animals in that facility. And it's, we've started it over the last year, is doing the dog licensing. So, if dogs have the tags on them, we can identify them when they do get loose and are able to return them to their owner. And it also narrows down that group of owners that probably should not have a pet to begin with because that they, you know, create an environment where the pets and dogs really become vicious and are not really conducive or ones that we want in the city at all. You know, the pets become victims when it's really the owners that have facilitated that or created an environment that, shoot, allows it to happen.
I respect that, but I also think there's another contingent of people whose dog digs under the fence and takes off, you know? And they're great owners. And I think, you know, again, it's almost no cost to the city to have that website.
Right, and through that, but again, if that dog has a tag on it when it gets out underneath the fence, it is very quickly identified and able to be reunited with its owner.
Go ahead, ma'am.
My question is regarding feeding the dogs to you down to once a day. I have a little toe down, I own the animal, but I think...
Well, that's after consulting with people that are very familiar with dogs. They said that's fine.
So, once you, once, you know, the people are hired, that you're talking about hiring part-time, is that, that's now because you don't have enough staff? Is that why, and then, you know, there's no one to clean up behind the dogs after they've gone to that? So, there's no one to clean up? So, once you hire more staff, which is what you're talking about, will that change you? Will they now be able to be fed more than once a day?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I mean, that's something that was recommended to me that, you know, they only have to eat once a day. And I got it from more than one source. So, I don't know if that affects it. I'm not sure.
I don't think we should only eat once a day. I don't find that acceptable myself.
I mean, I'll certainly look into it again.
And you also mentioned they're going to be creating an outdoor run so the dogs can get out, exercise?
That's, yes, something that we're looking into. I don't have a commitment yet on that, but there's some issues with that that we have to be concerned with. And if there are diseases and what kind, you know, is it going to be grass? Is it going to be pavement? How are we going to clean it? Do we have to seal it? I mean, there's issues in how it's going to be designed. So, I mean, it's early stages that we're looking into that. There's a lot of questions yet. But obviously, there's, people have it. There's facilities that have it, so we'll tap into them and we'll question them. Just the same way we did when we built this facility. We went out in the field and talked to a lot of people, went to different facilities, and figured out what the best way to do it.
Go ahead, Ms. Ray. Is there, is there one, any way at some point of partnering with the county to have a commie-run facility? Or is it mandated that the city has to have a own facility?
We can look at those options again. That was put in place because our options were eliminated with some facilities just not taking the dogs. And the cost was so high both in terms of boarding them and transporting them beyond the immediate boundaries of the city.
Has there been any other talks with the county?
I haven't had any.
Because it has to be expensive, all the municipalities, I think, and the county will run through time of the same idea, I think, you know, or layering of the city. But, I mean, it isn't, it's a clean facility where we have it, you know, from what I've seen at the time. And of course, we're talking about, it may be clean now because we're not feeding the dogs enough, but we'll put that aside. It's not, even Brad Shear said that it was pretty punchant down there when he went there. And at times there is, that no matter how that facility is taken care of, it's where the waste treatment plan is. So I'd like to see, maybe at some point we can talk to the county, see if we can move this in a partnership and be paid to, to the county, to try to combine and maybe have this facility in another place. And it might be more conducive having volunteers to come in because that's not the ideal place for anybody to go down there actually. And I know, again, I understand it's a short-term facility, but it does, you know, I think the place where that is is an issue. That's my personal feelings. Any other question?
I'm just going to suggest to you that we may want to ask for kind of regular updates as things start to happen. Does me...
Well, if you're planning on hiring two more, idea of part-time staff, they'll bring it to a total of how many part-time staff?
Three.
Three part-time.
Two full-time and hopefully three part-time.
Five still.
Just to recap, because we've talked about a lot of different things, what I would, I would like to see us talk about very quickly because it's possible for us to, so having court for legal on how we might be able to utilize volunteers safely for the city in the police contract. And also where we might default this animal control position to another position should we come up in a situation that we're short-staffed. I think those are immediate things that we have to look into. Other things will take time, but those were, and I understand the mayor's working on the website and that will happen after Labor Day. So that's, those would be my three priorities right now. In the meantime, I'm just going to do a little looking into the feeding thing because we could be perfectly in line with that. I mean, even dog, I don't know, I don't know what the guidelines are, but I'm willing to do a little bit of research on that too. But those are some things I'd like to see on our next committee agenda and have this linger.
Yeah.
So you're asking for another update in two weeks?
I'd like an update on the possibilities on where that animal control position can default to and what our legal safety zones are in utilizing volunteers, how we might utilize volunteers to go forward.
Can we ask for another update in two weeks?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Any other business for public safety? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, calls to order Health and Recreation, the 1954 Connect Little League team's six-week anniversary, Mr. Riggy?
Yes, the 60th anniversary of Connect will be winning the World Series is this August, so I think it's applicable, that we honor that with the resolution of the three people that have mentioned this before. And some people will be here to accept that on the 27th. And I said we'll follow with the renaming of that proportional over that one side.
Any questions? Huh? A little bit? Second? Any second?
Sorry.
Calls in favor? Anything else worth adding there?
This quarter field, about the Little League fields. I did get a couple of calls today from some other groups in the rent estate, especially the Little League field, and one was going on top of mine. So they showed some interest, I talked to them here briefly, but I think maybe if we can, when we meet with Jeremy Wednesday, you know, we can, maybe we should discuss some options that are out there. They did say they could take care of the field, the volunteers could take care of the field. But I think it's some things that we have to discuss for other uses of this open space.
And with that, I have an announcement, that Health and Recreation will be meeting this Wednesday morning at 9:00 AM here in room 110, Health and Recreation Committee to discuss a couple of things regarding the parks. Additionally, the Affirmative Action Advisory Committee will have their first organizational meeting on August 27th at 6:15 PM in room 201. Is there anything else? Call me for Health and Recreation.
Well, I'm sorry, we recess.
Recession, pardon me, second? Calls in favor?
I adjourn.
We're recessing because that meeting on...
That's a new meeting, it's been announced.
Okay. So where is Karen? Okay, calls to order Public Service and Utilities, Efficiency, Energy Efficiency and Water System Recovery Project, Mr. LaFoll. Any information you have, Bernie?
We request an agreement with Johnson Control Systems for a professional development agreement. For the last couple of years, we've been looking at our water meters throughout the city. We have about 1,450 active accounts, meters range anywhere from one-year-old to 75-years-old. It's a mishmash of meters. When we read it, we're antiquated, where we have meter reader, we'll take an actual photograph of the meter, it comes back to the office, we subtract the last one from the present. It's very time-consuming, not efficient. So this professional development agreement is performance contract-based. And what Johnson Control does, they come in, do an in-depth evaluation of the meters, they do typing and sizing, and the revenues gained should pay for the project. The cost of this is $52,500. It's only paid if the city doesn't enter into agreement to do the full meter replacement. These are automated, automatically read meters, so they'll just, Scotia just went through a meter upgrade, they did about 4,000 meters with Johnson Controls. I did go right along with them, they read 500 meters in less than an hour. We're reading probably 1,450 meters and it's taking us about four and a half months. We've already done some attrition over the last couple of years with meter reader at the SIO office. And if we move forward this project, those positions don't have to be filled, but if we don't move forward with this project, I'm going to need the help because we're just, we're not efficiently pulling a guy off the distribution, you know, to read the meters and make sure it's made in the distribution system. If the project moves along, $52,000 is rolled into the cost of total project. And we do have funding set aside over the last few years for meter replacement and capital funds that we have put aside, so we'll come out of there.
Questions? Any questions? You said for the total project, so do you have an estimated cost of the total project?
No, not yet. They'll bill off and they'll actually look at the meters because the one thing we're going to know is the city doesn't know the meters, the residents. So one of the problems we have is when we send out orders to replace the meters, we'll send it for them to replace the meter. So what we would do in this, as this moves forward, we would apply the law and change the city code where we would take responsibility in our worship of the meters, the meters become ours. Because essentially, meters are cash register. What goes in, goes through the meters, we're billing for. If they're not accurate, we're losing revenue every day. And we know that there's a number of meters, 50, 60, 70 years old, they're not accurate anymore. And the one thing I don't believe that was ever done was sizing and piping. I mean, to put a meter in, you just start putting a meter in. It has to be sized, it has to be piped. And I was familiar with that. And that's something that they would do. We did a very good job in Scotia, we talked to Lieutenant Public Works, extremely pleased with the work that they did. We reduced the vehicle on the road from every day of the week for, you know, 10 months out of the year to a couple days out of the year.
Thank you. Just follow up, you said that Scotia has 4,000?
One minute, 30-some hundred meters, yeah.
So what's the difference? They did residential as well?
We only have commercial.
That's my question. So they didn't do residential as well?
We're limited to commercial and for the industry rate.
All right, very good.
Or we'd be doing about 16,000.
And how much do we have set aside for the site?
Roughly over the last few years, I think there's about $1.4, $1.5 million set aside to do meter rate.
Okay, I hope that will cover it.
It's an expensive process. I believe, I don't measure what Scotia spent, but I could actually find out and send out email to you.
But again, they did, they did almost 4,000 meters. Are there any other questions?
Just one, it's just, can I have an update? Did we lose a main outdoor?
Yes, yes. At around 3:30, just above the break, it happened maybe seven, eight minutes ago.
Yeah, where we had the washout.
Yep. It's already closed, they've already got it open, they should be done within a couple hours. Well, there's 10 feet of seven-year-old pipe, the rest of the pipe is about 85 years old.
Any other questions, Mr. LaFoll?
I could flood the water in my house.
You're above Campbell, so you...
Just so I know.
It's from Campbell thing to Broadway going into the old subway, they're out of water there temporarily.
What, short-term or...
They should be done within a few hours. Typically, the crew is, they're good, they get in, they get out, the bike truck is there, they already have the hole opened up, they have pump in there and I left there about five after five to come back out the other side. But they will be working on another planned dog replacement at 4 o'clock this morning, tomorrow morning on Union Street. So that's a planned, long as they won't have any problems tonight.
Do they know the president's name?
Yes, they've informed the health department since four, yes.
Mr. Moon, a mayor?
When are we looking to start this project? This study?
This study? Yes. We'll enter, once the professional development agreement is signed after next Monday night and it gets signed by the mayor and through law, we'll have them to start. We've already started giving them some information. I've been working with John Kooch, because a lot of it's extracting information out of MUNIS, our meters. And the one thing that we realize is the MUNIS system is only going up to six-inch meters. Now, I know we have a couple of eight-inch meters in the city, we have one in Swenfink in the Skewell, in Woodlong, Albany, or the old Drumstick used to be. MUNIS doesn't have it listed, our eight-inch meters. So we've got to now physically go out and look and see between our eight-inch, including some of the meters in GE, because they start with the larger meters because the larger meters are your, you need more revenue for your larger meters than the one-inch meters in a, you know, in a small commercial building. So we're trying to extract the information for them, with John Kooch and Tyler Industries. They'll move on right away. Thank you.
Second?
That would be me, I'll second.
Calls in favor? Aye. Anything else before comments?
Thank you.
All intended, listen to your turn, I'll move. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.
All to the order claims, hopefully second session.
219 Bradymont Avenue. 219 Bradymont Avenue. So property, that old firehouse over on Bradymont Avenue, sorry to interrupt you here. Basically, the council approved the sale a couple of meetings ago, and that's the parcel right here. The seal was actually the whole gray shaded area. It turns out this is part of a paper street which didn't have an SPL. When the resolution was ready and then the council passed, it only was for this area because they felt the SPL was obvious to the whole area. So title insurance company is actually one who saw that and decided that they would really like to see amended resolution in order to ensure the title. So we're just doing amended resolution. It's the same exact deal that was described to the council, that was passed, nothing changing in terms of it, it's just the way the resolution was created.
The city didn't, they haven't had part of the post-sale two years ago, the war and the sale didn't happen, and part of it was, after the abandonment, was consolidated into one block and the consolidation never happened. So it's been part of this sale, it's the whole, the two parcels that will end up being consolidated into one parcel for future reference.
I'll move it.
Second.
Aye. Right, I'll move, we go into executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Give me an extra second, I'm shorthanded here today.